Good evening. It is now 7:03 and we'll call the meeting to order. First item on the meeting is agenda changes. Any agenda changes? We'll take a pause while we're getting chairs. There's one here. Someone tells me we just can't block that pathway to the door. I've heard that some places, I don't know where. I just got a question. It's a good question and I'll tell everybody so if anybody's wondering. I was asked what's the capacity of the room? And the capacity for the room is based on the capacity for the building. The capacity for the building is used for all usable square feet. The pool is usable square feet since patrons do swim in the pool. So the capacity for the building is about 520 people. So, we're well within capacity for this room. Yes. What's that? Oh gosh, yeah. Yeah. Sir, if you wanted to say anything, the public comment thing's up here. We're just taking a quick recess to get everybody in. It's right there after she's done with it. I think Bill grabbed the other ones. This'll make it easier. Here's a pen if you need it. All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. We write agenda changes. Any agenda changes? No? No agenda changes. Pardon me. Board issues? No? All right. Moving that clip past here. All right, public comment session. All right, 30 minutes only. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Shoot. All right, I got 12 folks so we'll limit it to two minutes and hope to get through people. Get through everybody so please, we got 12 folks, limit your comments to two minutes, please. Also, a couple things. Remember when you're addressing public comments, you address the whole board, not one board member, but the board as a whole, please. Yes, ma'am? We will try to have public, yes, ma'am. We will try to have public. Thank you, ma'am. Where's Julie at? There she is.
According to the motion that was passed, 30 minutes in the first public comment session. If time runs out, there will be 15 minutes in a second conference section, but only if time runs out.
You sure you wanna? Sure? Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, so, public comments. Try to keep it around two minutes. Remember you're addressing all of us, not one person in particular, please. Try to be civil and that's all I've got. So, Cody? Is it Cody? John? Cody?
First off, I want to start off by saying thank you to the director. He was presented with a problem over at the Clover Valley Ballfields. They were missing some safety wiring along the top of the fence and he made sure to get that taken care of, that was taken care of expeditiously and wanted to thank him for that on positive. Some other concerns that I've heard, there was two things. Somebody on the board had mentioned that the director was following the law too narrowly, something along those lines.
So the board mentioned?
A member of the board.
The board mentioned?
The board mentioned that the director was following it too narrowly. There's only one way to follow the law. You have to follow it. I mean, he's been told in the past that he was doing things inappropriately. The board had also mentioned back in the past that he was not doing things appropriately and then later on they said, when it came down to gifting time for returning seniors, they said to get crafty with it. Like, here again, you're sending mixed signals to your director. And then later on, the board has become biased on the director. Said that, the board said they were having an open mind, now all of a sudden the board is now biased. So, it kind of frustrates me that the board is saying these things and sending mixed signals to the public and to the director. Said that he was also running it too strictly as a business. You kind of have a fiscal responsibility to the public. That's one of the things that you need to focus on here. It's not just about like, all the things. I mean, if you can do a whole bunch of things and keep it at the lowest cost possible, you also have a responsibility to the public and you need to take that into consideration.
Thank you very much, Cody. And Ms. Teresa?
Yeah, thank you. First off, I would just like to say that I have no objection to what the director is doing, what the commissioners are doing, or what any of your coaches are doing. I would like to focus on the positive, put the past behind us. Let's move forward and enjoy our new swim line. To quote my son, adapt, adjust, and overcome. There are many outstanding qualities taking place with NWPRD right now in the present. For example, swimmers achieving new records, scoring by acquaintance, and growing in personal goals and records. Most of all, coming to practice and embracing that their love for the sport is good. For NWPRD, having great customer service and a tight knit work group, and trying to improve our district's future, very important. So, why can't I, as a parent and a community member, accept our children's passions for the sport, support them in their goals, and let them learn through this experience? And let's just move forward, as well as supporting the current NWPRD staff members. I welcome any followers with the same mind to join me on our mission in making NWPRD and NWAC a harmonious gathering place for our children and our community as a whole. I thank you guys for listening. I'm not really a public speaker, but I am welcoming you to join me to make this place a better place for my son, for our community, and everybody else. Let's just put the past behind us. That's all I have to say.
Too many buttons. No, we're good. Shane?
My name's Shane Hoffmeyer. I'm a proud Oak Harbor resident. I'm also a proud taxpayer within the Northwoodby Parks and Recreation Taxing District. I don't know, you know, I would hope everybody's noticed, sign out on the outside of the building, tax-supported facility. I think that's very important. You know, I can't quite think of the exact number of taxpayers in the district, but I know it's tens of thousands, you know, probably 30,000, 40,000, I would assume. Anywho, I just wanted to pass on an observation to the board. I was at the Fidalgo Avenue Block Party Pig Roast this weekend and they had a pig as a mascot. Kind of unique, big pig. Anyway, one of the Northwoodby Parks and Recreation District lifeguards was there. One of the happiest people, I seen there all day. I don't know the girl's name, never seen her before. But anyway, she was dancing with the pig. It was pretty cool to see. Had a lifeguard shirt on though and on the back of it, it said, "Uniting our community through fitness and fun." And I just, I wanted to take this time to let the board know that I feel that the director, Bill Walker, is uniting this community through fitness and fun and I'm very grateful of that. You know, a lot of what I hear out in the community from thousands of people is, this man and this facility is doing great things, much better than it's been in a long, long, long time. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. Paul?
First, first off.
Thank you, Paul.
Now, sir, give me my, I have to read this. My name is Paul Fersall and I'm one of the board of directors of Veterans Resource Center of Woodby Island. We help vets to connect to the VA and other valuable organizations who can help them to find solutions to their needs. Tonight, I, as a taxpayer who funds this pool in Oak Harbor, would like you to consider freeing up budget money to allow the disabled veterans to use the pool for aerobic dance or lap practice at no charge. You know that these men have given their all to protect you and your kids, who have the opportunity to enjoy this facility without bullets being shot at them, like in the countries less fortunate than ours. I'm aware that the Navy pays for the use of the pool and retirees get minimal discount for use, even the NWAC swim team is subsidized with tax money. But, what about the disabled vet who is barely getting by on his or her disability and social security? Why is my tax money not helping him or her in this case? Would it be a wonderful gesture if you defined a way to help the disabled, even those who live in the parks and woods? They are the forgotten in our community. What say you, board? A simple way to achieve this end is to set up a budget or to fundraise campaign money or to support it in a 501(c)(3), rather. Here's where we come in. Since we are a 501(c)(3) or our organization could be the turnkey for this effort, you get the money and run it through us back to you. Let us not let down the disabled vet. I know they're counting on you and so am I. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Paul.
You have any questions?
We'll get back to that on new business if we can, Paul. And I actually want to ask-
I'm not allowed to drive at night.
Okay, then can we get some information from you so we can get somebody to look into it afterwards?
What is your phone number or email?
My phone number is 425-
I got to get that back at once, sir.
All right. And Sheri Hoffmeyer?
During the director's evaluation on August 7th, one of, well, the board made a motion to terminate the director's contract. After doing this, he stated that he promised the good people who did all this good homework that he would do this.
The board?
The board.
The board made a comment.
These people are the same seven people that brought charges against the director and they're broken, he had broken several laws. The subcommittee, as well as the district attorney, said there were no laws broken. How does this make good homework? I'd like to give you the board homework. You tell me, did you make a promise to seven people when there are over 20,000 people who live in this district? There are over 9,000 people who voted on the last levy, over 6,000 people were in favor of that. Yet, the board promised seven people that it would make a motion to terminate Bill Walker's contract. And by the way, wasn't one of those seven another board member? Just my perspective.
Ally, did you want to say something? All right. Go ahead.
I do not want Bill Walker to fire. I want him to stay at the pool. He's nice to people and kind and friendly to people.
Okay, thank you, Ally. Richard Ford? That's Ford.
I have read the minutes of the June 5th, 213 board meeting and watched the video recording of the August 7th, 213 commissioner meeting of director Walker's perceived performance. The commissioner seemed annoyed that directors were trying to keep in budget and limit future taxpayer costs. They rate him on his perceived lack of support for continued taxpayer subsidy of the recreation club at the current 50% level of actual cost. With about $40,000 for coaches' wages and 6,000 pre-lane hours per year, this is a substantial taxpayer subsidy for about 120 club members, swim club members of adult youth, swim teams. But a commissioner stated, "We underpologize the taxpayers for this." Well, I am not aware of any other Northwoodby after-school youth sports program receiving taxpayer subsidy for their coaches. The commissioner seemed displeased with director Walker's proposal to the commissioners to consider an increase in annual swim club dues to a level closer to what other swim teams in the area pay. The commissioners also faulted director Walker for disagreeing with them about former swim team members being gifted or entitled to free access to the pool while they are in college. In the same meeting on August 7th, a commissioner faulted director Walker for not understanding any words from the commissioners and not the taxpayers. Both the director and commissioner worked for Northwoodby taxpayers. So I ask the commissioners, those who currently have either bid members, R members, or have family members of the taxpayer subsidized recreational teams, have you ever considered that it might be a conflict of interest to give taxpayer subsidies to yourself and your family members? I feel it's a conflict of interest, seems unethical, and we hear about the legality.
Thank you, Richard. Julie, we're good on time. Do you want to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
After careful review of public record documents and listening to audio recordings from Northwoodby Parks and Rec meetings, the following has come to our attention on speaking through the group at this point. On October 29, 2012, Bill Walker and head commission chair Scott Boe used the provisions of Northwoodby Park Record Resolution 99-73 to gain access to the NWAC bank account. Resolution 99-73 was used to influence the guidance of district legal counsel and MRSC to justify NWAC staff irate's actions and claims regarding the NWAC bank account to support Mr. Walker's decision to self-report to the state. However, in July 2009, the NWPRD board has resolution 0902 replacing that resolution 99-73 in establishing the structure and governance under which NWAC was and is to operate. The two resolutions vary greatly. Resolution 0902 defines a dramatically different structure that now Mr. Walker, commissioner Boe, designated at the Island Bank advising legal counsel and the board to believe existed. Resolution 0902 negates the director's right to have unfettered access to NWAC's records and supports privacy concerns expressed by NWAC staff. The recording of the July 2009 board meeting discussion surrounding the reformation of resolution 0902 shows that the board intended that the NWAC bank account would exist and the NWPRD would have a second part of relationship with funds in that account. If the ongoing audit has been done based on resolution 99-73, state should be notified. It is entirely possible the audit should be significantly revised based on resolution 0902 and the changes made to NWAC since October 2012 are in direct violation of the current resolution 0902. This information was given to the board and I would like to know what the board plans on dealing with it. I also have all the documentation supporting these claims right here.
And real quick, because once again, I was kindly chastised. I'd like to thank that person for not addressing things. I actually spoke, Julie, to Cheryl, shoot, Walker. No, I talked to, is it Susan Walker or which is the Walker? Sarah, thank you. I talked to Sarah Walker from the state who did the audit and, and what is that? Cheryl from Endurts. Cheryl Brant from Endurts, who's the insurance folks. And actually, we're looking into the legality of the way that resolution 0902 is worded because that might go against some of the WACs, the way it's set up. I think the intent was different and I think that's where, you know, the intent was not to set up a separate entity the way it sounded totally. So we'll have to look at intent, we'll have to investigate it totally, and we'll have to look at the legalities of it. The state is aware of it. And they said, Sarah, what's her name again? Thank you. Sarah Walker from the state said that had no bearing at all. She reviewed both documents and she said that had no bearing at all in the outcomes of what she had. And that hasn't even been released yet because they're still looking at stuff. So, we don't have that final, the initial draft came out, the state recalled it, and they're still looking into it, so.
And that will be a public record?
Oh, yes, ma'am. That'll be a public records and we'll actually, you know, let everybody know when it's actually released for the public. Yes, ma'am. Is that Cindy?
So, I just have a question. I live on the subcommittee that has some allegations against director Walker and only a subcommittee has looked at those things. The board has not discussed those and I'm wondering if there's going to be any findings to know?
The board as a whole did look at those.
They did?
Actually, what happened was we submitted it, the board accepted the report.
Yeah.
We'd never debated that. That's what we were trying to do with that resolution that everybody's excited about because I'd given the motion and now we've got all the findings before us and I'm going to talk about that later.
Okay, there you go. Yes, ma'am. All right. Lynn? I'm pushing too many buttons, Lynn. Hold on just a second. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, go.
Out here, we often have a pool of laughing children, a happy place, but when you look in through the other side of the glass, things are not always so happy. While we disagree on much, I think we largely agree that things are not going well. Most disturbing to me are the failures of logic and reason that allow the trouble to continue to serve and suffer. We cannot bestow on the director full authority over executive functions and simultaneously burden the board with full responsibility for his actions. If you wish to take responsibility for his actions, then you must change the bylaws and revoke his authority. Neither can we claim that juvenile and inexperienced boards overseeing Mr. Walker's tenure and simultaneously say that the board exercised informed judgment in hiring him, either the board understood its district and its role or it did not. Last fall, director Walker used an obsolete resolution to prosecute a destructive and costly agenda. We know now that he misrepresented his knowledge about the NWAC checking account and used false documentation to justify his actions. Whether he acted by virtue of incompetence or malfeasance is immaterial. He acted in violation of the law and he didn't stop there. When he announced that mandatory WSI certification would be required for all instructors, Mr. Walker stated in an email, "We do not have a policy for reimbursement." Of course, that wasn't true. The employee manual, which is established by resolution, calls for reimbursement of employee training and specifically calls out the WSI. After this violation was exposed, Mr. Walker informed the board that he was reinstating the reimbursement policy. That policy is part of a binding resolution. He has no authority to either rescind, revise, revoke, or reinstate a resolution. He must simply abide by them. And tonight, he will propose changes to the NWAC structure, not just a easing group, but a change to the structure that will further violate the existing governing resolution and leave it to you to adjust your expectations to meet his standards. The entire history of NWPRD resolutions contained a single liar. When he holds the hand, he holds them all and he has no excuse for his persistent failure of duty. It is likely that the district's attorney wants you to refrain from terminating Mr. Walker until the lawsuit is resolved. I challenge you to evaluate that guidance. The attorney's job is to minimize the cost of the lawsuits and your job is to direct and navigate the district. You have to stop believing. The cost of doing the right thing in the future may include taking a get for the past. Two more seconds, thirty seconds? Okay.
I'll come back to you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. Wendy?
So, a little more. As a resident, I appreciate the efforts of the district to offer new programs that increase the reach of the district. As taxpayer, I appreciate the fiscal responsibility of director Walker and I require that my tax dollars be spent responsibly and to the greatest interest and benefit of the public. As an experienced professional, I do have to say that the performance review that I witnessed last week was truly one of the most unprofessional exercises I've ever seen. And I really implore, so in the interest of moving forward, would suggest that perhaps things like sticking on topic be exercised by the useful parliamentarian. As you may or may not remember, I suggested last year as part of the bylaw reviews that those two functions be separate. I think that perhaps it would have been a more productive meeting because it quite often was off-topic. There were lots of personal and emotional feelings shared when it was intended to be a professional exercise. And I would say as a human being, it really troubled me to see how this person, as a professional, was treated by the people who, by the board who said that they were for him. And so in that professional capacity, I would say that it's your responsibility to give him direction, but also to model the behavior that you expect of him and of others. Professionalism, mutual respect. I think you get the point there. I think, I hope that the board also recognizes that when they decided to serve, they agreed to put the district ahead of their own personal feelings, so the good of the district. And I think that it's certainly not too late to do that. I think that-
You can have a couple of seconds.
Okay, yeah, and so anyway, there's plenty more, but really, I'm not entirely sure why he wants to keep this job after what I witnessed. I am however glad that he does and I hope that everyone can move forward, look to move forward in a more productive relationship because people like me are counting on it for the success of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. John, and please excuse me, sir, I'm not going to try to say-
I'd like to speak in support of the director. You know, there's a lot of, it's a constellation of things that are exposed going on. There's a disintegration. I'm not sure, I'm not fully here to say, you know, but from the whole things, what I've been able to witness, this might be, the things that he's been able to do or at least to move the pressure, if not, maybe necessary, is necessary for the board to be good. You know, so, you know, shortly, I would like to support the director and his desktop.
Thank you. All right, we are complete with our first public comment section. So, we're going to move on to minute approval. Minutes of July 11th, 2013 regular meeting and the we'll look at first. Any changes, additions, or deletions?
Yeah, I'd like to take issue with public comment on, I don't think it's changed. There's on page two, under public comment. On number three, says Lynn Bott discusses her history with district and then compares director Walker to Andy Keane.
I thought we weren't going to put public comment on here except see public comment.
Because it's audio.
Yeah.
I just think that's kind of-
So can we strike all public comment except see or listen to audio?
Yes, we can.
All right. So we will strike all public comment and-
Will you include the names, sir?
All, yes, including names. Because we had talked about that before so that we don't get into the-
The wording.
Yeah, the wording. We don't want to interpret some of these words, that way it's their words and they're tone, yeah, exactly.
So can we amend these right now just to tick out all the-
Yeah. What the men, so, the public comment section, the way I've got it is, we'll say, please see the web address. Public comment begins at 15:20.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to provide this and send it to you for approval of it.
Yes, thank you.
The last bullet point at the top of the next page actually included an action that was taken and that's what our minutes are supposed to include. I mean, it's still in the sound file, obviously, so I'm referring to the sound file- I mean, it's still in the sound file, obviously, so I'm referring to the sound file first we get.
We'll just leave that... Oh, okay. Moves to allow... Okay, that needs to stand because it is a motion and the top of the next page actually has a motion.
It doesn't.
Yep.
The last sentence in there I will take out because it says what I discussed, but the rest involves...
Please, yes. So, take out the last sentence and leave the rest. Comments, questions on that part? No? Everybody agree? All right. Any other... Thank you, Karen. Any other changes, deletions, or comments?
You know, I think that's confusing. I would just take it all out except for that first sentence and take out the motion because the motion is a procedural motion which awaits to something which isn't recorded in the minutes. It's asking to extend the comment for one minute and we're not having the comments recorded. So, why record the extent for one minute?
So, what are you saying there Alan?
Just take out the whole paragraph and forget that last little bit about the motion. The motion doesn't mean anything.
Because it's only responsible for that one time?
Extending a comment, which is recorded in the minutes.
Because it only has to you. Step it out. Please. Okay? Any other changes, deletions, or comments? Okay.
I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 11th, 2013 minute with the current changes. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right. The minutes of the August 7th, 2013 special meeting, we'll do those. Comments, questions, or deletions?
I remember Steve saying that he was going to restructure the director's contact. He may have just said it as an aside, but it wasn't anything that I heard.
It was out loud.
It was?
It was.
Okay.
It was what?
He said it was out loud.
You could hear it in the audio probably. I asked Sean, whoever was sitting here, what he suggested.
Any other questions, comments, or deletions?
We can't make a motion to abstain.
Oh, you weren't here?
Yep.
Motion to accept. Accept.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from the special board meeting, August 7th, 2013. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All in favor? One sustain. All against? No?
We all agree.
What's that?
Did somebody abstain?
She abstained. Lori abstained because she wasn't here. Yes, sir. So, all right. We're done with minutes approval. On to vouchers.
Did I hear a May or was that four?
No, Alan, it's all in favor and one abstention. Yep. Any questions? Yes, sir.
There's some refund NWA balances for... I'm just curious as to what those were for a couple folks. I don't see any detail.
One is about six or seven line down there.
Yes. Was that dues? Was that overpayment?
Yeah, I believe that was... I'm trying to remember here specifically, but I believe that person had paid in advance and then ended up getting moved out of town. Okay. So, he couldn't abstain.
I have a question. Do they audit our services? Well, let's see, the last month we have to pay for that. It's $218.
No, one more.
And then does insurance cover it all? No. Is that because it's self-reported that's not covered? Is it considered to be covered?
I don't believe they cover it in any case. No, I will check on that.
There were two meets in the span of a couple weeks where two nights, two nights. That one, I'm not sure if that's two meets. Must be. I can call those doctors if you want me to give them more detail on that. Kids love soccer gym. I don't know, what is that? Kids love soccer. It was over.
That was from last fall. They actually invoiced us until this couple of months ago.
I'd like to make a motion to approve District voucher five, 2,896, 5,929.
I have a motion to approve District voucher number 5,896 to 5,929. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All against? All extensions? It's all in favor. Combined staff reports. Can you hold on just a second while we sign the voucher paperwork? Thank you. Yes, sir. No problem.
Okay. Having been directed quite early recently to keep my report brief and to give you my report a week in advance, I'd like to develop questions. My comments are going to be pretty short and I'll see if there are detailed questions about any parts of this. Wanted to point out Erin Trendall is employee of the month. She's been here about six months and she's enjoyed working with her front desk all this while I'm very happy with her. And has taken on some new responsibilities. She'll actually be replacing Miss Shelley when she leaves. Her husband is getting out of the circus and will do the organizing once. So, she's been here a couple of years and I've been a miss. But Erin's going to do a great job for her. Wanted to mention a record number of attendees in aerobics last month, 975. Never had that made before. So, and Alan, I have an apology and clarification to make to you, sir. Aquatics is an English word.
I know that.
But it's only used in Canada.
It's in English, man.
We cut that out, yes. So, thank you to our linguistic source for that. There were some awesome swims at the PNS meet. You see it was detailed in Bill Patterson's report. And culminating actually in our very cool article about Olivia Tungate in the WBE News Times. It's an awesome article. So, we've got a bunch of really talented swimmers here and we're really, really happy to have that going on. So, I wanted to get in a little more detail about the budget items that I mentioned. In addition to some of the things where I mentioned overages and underages, our hot foot heater failed this week. And I mentioned, I think I gave an email to the commissioners a couple days ago that we're going to hope to sort of hang on with it and have it fixed during shutdown. Well, it failed completely yesterday. So, that is about a $5,000 expense just to replace the entire heater. We've done parts on that thing over the past year and replaced it seems like every piece of it, but it is gone. And it's so old that it's the heat exchanger that's out, but the heater stinger can't even find for that model heater. So, the whole thing's got to go. The... I also mentioned with the other expenses... No, I also mentioned in my report that Nathan Manny's bookkeeper had failed to invoice us for four straight months and that he wasn't sure what the damage was going to be. Well, now I know it's about $8,000. So, we're already significantly over budgeted on the legal side, but it'll be a little In addition, a piece of good news, I did call the treasurer about the county treasurer, about the note I made in my report where it said we're $16,000 for the budget of tax revenues so far this year, but we don't know that that will hold. $13,000 out of 16 is actually late payments for previous years, so we do get to keep that. And so, ideally, we'll come out right at our $576,000 for the year plus $10,000, $15,000 from these late payments when people are finally catching up. So, that's what that overage is all about. And we will have that little bit extra money to cover some of these expenses. Another piece of news that I think I also mentioned either in the budget report or in my discussion of the NWA checking account, there is $16,000 that came from that NWA bank account that we do not know the source. It could be fundraising dollars, which logically go back to swim team expenses. It could be dues. It could be meat revenues, either from visiting team fees or from concessions that we get at the meets. I would point out that at the time that the $16,000 originally in the bank account is the day after I made the swim meet. So, some of that money might be swimming revenues, which would come to the district as discretionary funds. That decision about where that money gets allocated is to all of you. So, that's it. And then the other thing I want to mention in this context was the roof. As Kirk briefly mentioned last week, it's getting to the end of summer, toward the end of the truck, good, dry roof for carrying leather and the flat sections of the roof, all three sections are wet. So, it goes through another winter. It's not just leaky roofs, it's damage to the internal structures of the building that happened to the roof. Matt has called in to the roofer that gave us the best bid last fall to make sure that we're still in St. Albart to do $16,000. So, let's figure this out. As far as coming up with a motion or a resolution, obviously the commission can do what they want. The motion to make any adjustments in the budget, we do have five months left in the year to still make those decisions, but we have... My understanding is there's other pressing matters to deal with. It's up to all of yous.
Does the roof repair need to happen in the summertime before the rain season or does it matter as far as construction?
Well, I'm not a roofer, so I don't know the answer to that. Is there... Do you think we...
I'm thinking...
What did the next year's budget do in January, God willing?
I'm wondering if it needs to happen. Do you want to make a motion to go ahead and go forward with that now or is it something we can wait until a month or so?
I would sure like to just pull the trigger.
Do you need a motion to do that?
We'll do that under new business. We'll ask questions now and we'll do it under new business.
Were the other bits higher than the 16? One was about the same. That has all the records. One was significantly higher, it was in the high twenties. But it's roofing, if you're not worried, we did some research on them and on their references and they're very good. Tenure warranty on the roof, so we're confident that's going to be right now.
Questions for the director?
Yes. Just so I understand your first page of your report. Overall, we're $72,000 ahead of budget for the year. That means that we have $72,000 available, given our projections, right?
We're $72,000 better than projections and realizing we're not a for-profit organization, that's how QuickBooks records it.
Yes, that's fine.
Revenue minus expenses is $72,000 ahead of budget, right?
Ahead of what we had expected to be.
Yeah, at this time of the year, right?
But hopefully, the rest of the year will be as we projected for the rest of the year. And so, it seems to me that the incidental numbers that we're talking about, like $16,000 for the roof, should be able to be folded in and keep us within our budget projections.
Well, as I mentioned here, that's 50,000 of 72 is the Endurus premium.
Well, you said that it was budgeted for July and it's due in August, but what difference does that mean to an annual budget?
Well, it appears in that 72,000 because it makes it look like we... Well, at the time that that July 31st report came out, we had to spend it.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
We still have to spend it in August.
So, it looked... And you would have said that it was accounted for when you read the numbers, even though it wasn't.
Right. In my list underneath that 72,000, some point in there where I'm talking about expenses, that's...
Yeah, it says that, but I couldn't figure out how that really made a difference because it's in July or August if it's a year's budget, you don't pay it a month later, you know? But if you are accounting for it on a monthly line and you say in July we're 72,000, whatever it is, $72,000 ahead, okay, that still gives us $22,000, which should cover the roof and the heater unit. Because if it's 72 minus 50, we still got 22. And when it's 17 and 5, that comes up to 22. So, somehow there should be money for the two of them.
Right. And as I explained, the balance of 22,000 goes in there. Well, I mentioned 16,000. We're 16,000 ahead of where we thought we would be on tax revenue. That's not the fourth board point. And my question at the time I wrote the report was, I didn't know if we'd be able to keep that money.
Yeah, well, we can't by some means.
So, we can.
The other... One thing that goes with that is you're going to work through those sections. You have the revenue up for life saving, for example, but then down at the bottom of the page, you have the cost up for instruction.
Right.
So, it's the cost up for instruction that take out of the revenue that's up for... Like, if you're doing program planning, you'd have the revenue and the expense that you get and see what the life saving was. If you're doing totally separate, I don't really understand what the numbers mean.
Right. This is an explanation of the QuickBooks report that I came from.
Yeah, right.
So, there's a number for revenue. All the different revenues for the district are listed here and all the expenses down here. Instead of taking program with revenue and expense, another program with revenue.
I understand that, but on this front page summary, it sort of sounded like life saving had profit and then that you had more money from it than you expected in the first part. And then at the bottom of the page, it said, "But we paid more because it was bigger." And so, I was wondering what the actual balance was because it's not working in a way that I can see. Is it really more or is it just the increased size paid for more salaries?
That's the answer for you, if you're deciding. It would depend on how much we're over in revenue and how much we're over...
It sort of does, doesn't it?
We're about 6,500 ahead in revenue, yes. And I look at lifeguard training, instruction, looking, I don't have another... Part of the problem is these budget numbers in payroll were folded into larger groups. They actually get spent, just sort of get broken out, so it's a little bit tough to tell, but... tell, but, but uh, W S I instructor, we had twenty-one hundred dollars in, in payroll expense. Lifeguard training instructor is seventeen hundred and sixty-five in payroll expense. And neither one of those numbers had a specific budget line item attached to them, so you could say we were about to have those two numbers together, close to four thousand dollars over budgeted expense, but that's sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
So we're a little ahead overall in the red cross trade.
Okay, so that they are off each, against each other, even though we can't tell the exact number.
Exactly, right.
Okay. So that answers my question, that the cost of oil on the first page should be costed, it should be taken out of the revenue on the top of the QuickBooks page, regarding what we have set this.
Right. Okay.
Can you fill on that? Bottom line, third column, where, where am I looking for that?
Oh.
Seventy-two thousand.
Uh, you are looking.
Seventy-two thousand ahead.
It sort of messed me up when I, when you asked me to provide that full year report.
Oh, is it on the, just the, through the January thirty-one?
It's on page, it's in here, it says sixty.
Page twenty-one. Twenty-one of the report, okay. Hold on, you got it?
Bottom line, third column, which I think after I, there was a treasurer's report that came out with a little bit of extra um, tax revenue in it. I think I printed this report after I wrote my staff report, so that bottom line, third column, I think it's seventy-three, five.
Okay, so this is just through the July timeframe?
Correct.
Again, okay. Yeah. Now, didn't you provide us with the year-to-date also through budget?
Year-to-date, year-to-date, year-to-year to entire year's budget.
Yeah.
That starts on page twenty-two and goes through four pages.
Okay, that's where I kinda had a question. I, I see, just looking at our total income on page twenty-three there, says total income of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three thousand basically. Let me go over to page twenty-five, we have total expenses of six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that looks like a pretty good deficit year-to-date, just, just revenue to expenses, so I'm thinking that would probably be a more accurate report to look at. And then that's, there, are you looking for, uh, page twenty, twenty, um, three, look at that, total income there on the far left, first column, uh, says total income, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, forty-three cents. So that's total income for the district at this point, including the uh, levy. Is that correct? Am I missing something?
No, I think, I think, I think um, that there's another adult of levy money that comes in in the fall, which brings the number up to ninety-eighty-four.
And it will, but I'm just looking at revenue to date, and we will, we'll get another big chunk.
Yeah, and that balances out.
So you think we're, that's why we're down in our revenues, because we only have just a half year in there?
Yeah, and you will see, uh, I'm not looking at it right now exactly, but you will see the year-to-date revenue, um, on the one report versus the other, and the, the bottom line net income on the one report versus the other, they'll, they'll look different.
Definitely different, yes.
Because the thing that I ran this report, it wasn't on the first of August, so what it does is, since we were looking at full year, it goes through the date, including everything in August. It goes through the, through, uh, through uh, any transaction that's been entered in August. And we tend to lag a week or so behind in actually getting the sales reports entered, so actual sales, or actually, this would include all the expenses that had been entered up until whatever day I ran this report. But it doesn't include all the sales, and I guess that's where I get this.
Your, your summary sheet shows a surplus of sixty-two thousand dollars at the end of the year, through July thirty-first. There's about nothing, and that's not a surplus, that's a negative. The negatives because it's, it's not all back, so the negatives mean that there's surpluses.
Something like that would be a good question.
Okay, so it's a sixty-two thousand dollar deficit at the end of the year in the projection, then?
Yeah, so we're gonna do a, it, QuickBooks does kinda mess with expenses.
This year-to-date element is minus sixty-two, and that's why I would say, there's the seventy, there are expenses.
That's a seventy-two thousand dollar.
Seventy-two thousand dollars of.
That's just through July, just through July.
Okay, but where's the annual projection?
Here's the, here's the annual through December.
Projected to be zero.
Zero to that.
Total.
Right. Zero, but this is a negative, and that's what I was questioning.
Yeah, the reason for that is that there are expenses, there are August expenses entered.
Right, we don't have the revenue.
Where all the revenues have been entered, yeah, so the actual, the actual is gonna be about sixty-two thousand dollar deficit.
I have a question, just to sort of summarize the general question I've got in my brain. You have us, um, seventy-two thousand dollars ahead of budget at the moment. Uh, you have expended, the fifty thousand dollars brings it down to twenty-two thousand dollars ahead of budget. And you have really urgent expenditures which come out, if I figure it out right, to about twenty-five thousand dollars, not counting the roof. Being the, the, I think for the.
We have the heat exchanger that's.
Heat exchanger.
Well, the one, the one in the H V A C system that we're gonna do very shutdown.
Yes.
And then also the spa here.
Yes.
Which comes to about twenty thousand. And then the roof is gonna be about thirty-sixteen.
So that's about thirty-six thousand. So we're looking at fifteen thousand dollars that you have to find in my budgets.
That's correct.
Other questions, comments, or concerns for the director?
I have my idea.
I asked a while ago for a uh, business plan for the swim team. I've yet to get that. I'd really like that by next month. I wanted it written form, in a visual person. Yep. I'm a new coach, you know, detailed goals, short-term, long-term, how are you gonna achieve those, that type of thing. Can I get that, please?
Ballpark numbers.
What's that?
And ballpark numbers.
And ballpark numbers?
We have two, two of thousands when he's estimating the business plan.
Ballpark numbers, I wasn't asking for figures for his business.
I just wanted to see what you wanted, in the sense of some of the.
Oh, okay.
But I don't wanna work that deep, I just wanna get a feel. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On these two schedules for pool, on the summer one, I understand, but on the winter one, the masters seem to be gipped by a lane. I wanna make sure that you didn't change it, because it's um, the same schedule for last fall. Okay, so it's still four lanes, it's just that the box is the wrong size. It's the light box.
You're looking, you're looking at noon masters?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the light channel, which I assume is next fall. You didn't mention it in the descriptions, but you changed the boxes. So twelve o'clock masters is there, twelve to one fifteen, and it's indented instead of being straight like it used to be. So I can assume it's straight, and that was just a typo. Thank you. I was just a little insecure about that. And that for who, everyone was worrying about conflict of interest, it's a total conflict of interest, because I assume the masters.
I have a question on the schedule. Oak Harbor High School, I don't see where they're, they're all new. And uh, two, three, or five, three, I think I'm missing a, I mean, I think I'm missing one, is that it?
Yeah, they get two lanes from four, with the contract, either four fifteen or four thirty, and it's twelve, five thirty. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
So that's Monday, right? Tuesday, Friday, thank you.
Is that O H S, H, H S C? What was the question?
It was about Oak Harbor High School, the girls and the boys, between four o'clock and five thirty, is what it is, two lanes.
I don't see them in there.
He said it is uh, not on there, it should be.
Yeah, it's in the contract. Okay, I see them on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, at six-thirty to seven.
Well, I thought, I thought I seen it in an email where he actually mentioned that on Tuesday, Friday, it didn't mention it.
All right, any other questions on the director's report?
One more clarification, masters and N WAC is five thirty in the morning, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, because I know we do have masters still, every morning or at work.
What they, what they do this?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, we're just in like, at the very top of the page.
I have a question about the website, it says more details to follow, is that what you, you're having an additional meeting, or are you gonna talk about that today?
I can talk about it today, because all Tony's done right now is to do, to lay out a couple of designs, and essentially come up with where everything's gonna go, so we're just working on it together.
Is that projection for when we'll go live?
I'd like to see it before the next meeting, but I'm not sure.
It's gonna be a long schedule to get it out, and then put it on the Facebook page and promote the new website, the Facebook page.
Other questions? All right, on, on to unfinished business, N WAC dues proposal. I say, Bill, I don't have the uh.
Last two pages.
Thank you.
It says page twenty-six.
Thanks. Simple numbers, there you go. All right. This is what was submitted to us, there's been no motion made by the board. Do we wanna have a motion made by the board?
I'd like to make one comment on the funding, on the finance in this place, given the public comments earlier.
Can we say that's the board comments at the end, sir?
We certainly can, but it sort of germinated, but I'm happy to.
You mind?
Not a problem.
Sure?
You want your chair?
Ah, yeah, I want a pretty liberal chair, so. All right, well, Alan.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
How much, I mean, current, like, your enrollment in N WAC and masters in the high school, how much would it increase revenue to raise like this ten percent a year?
You still, all things are equal?
Yeah, yeah.
Our budgeted revenue for N WAC for this year is seventy-five thousand dollars, because it's just been used, so about seventy-five hundred a year.
I'm gonna vote against the motion if we ever make the motion.
Okay.
And the reason is, um, one of our mandates is to provide as good programs as possible.
Can we make a motion so we can discuss that?
Yeah, sure, but I can, we can make a motion, that's all.
Yeah, I know. If there's no motion on the, on the board, we'll move on.
I will, I will make a motion to go with this.
So you're making a motion to go?
I don't wanna talk about it.
We have a motion to approve the five pieces of the N WAC dues thing?
As presented by the.
As presented by the director. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion.
I'm gonna vote against the proposal.
Alan wants to let us know he's gonna vote against it?
And the reason is, one of the things we've tried to do, and we are frugal, despite your views about trying to make profits, we are frugal, we in fact in the last levy asked for less than we had in the previous levy, because we didn't need it to balance the books. We keep the costs down at all times, but at the same time, it's a community program that we offer, and our job is to keep the fees down, so it doesn't become any worse of a burden on people in the community that have a hard time paying the fees than it would be if we made hot fees. So our job is to keep fees down, be as cheap as possible, so we can spend them, spread the money as far as possible, and raising the fees just because other clubs have fees that are higher, is not in our, our framework. Our framework is to provide the best service at the cheapest cost possible to members of the community, and to do it fairly. And it's sort of like a positive or action type of thing, where if you have a low income, at least you can come and enjoy the facilities here. And that goes for the swim team as well. It's very expensive, but it's cheaper than other swim teams, and way to go, let's keep it down, so that more people can enjoy it and it's not a burden to their families. So I'm totally against this, because I don't see any justification for raising the fees in the sense that we can't have a team without it.
I appreciate what you're saying about keeping the fees low and, and not having to overspend if we don't have to, but we have a deficit right now, one in one area, because our legal fees, and we cannot project that, and if we continue to get lawsuits brought against us, then how will we continue to fund that if we don't have that, that cushion in our budget? If there's no other way to bring in revenue right now at this moment, and we don't know, I mean, we continue to have people submitting lawsuits, and we have to defend ourselves against those, and speak legal counsel, and there's also, other things are going on there, dragging out, we don't know how long it's gonna last, so we have to have money in our budget from somewhere.
There's a difference to this fellow here, who I'm gonna talk to later. We use lawyers in all the law. I don't know if I wanna go to the public and say, because we run through the lawyer all the time, we have a deficit because we're paying the lawyer, so you're gonna have to pay more for your swim team.
Well, no, I'm just saying we have to dispute our allegations, I mean, the legal allegations.
I understand what you're saying on the, on this, I understand the other exactly, we went through the subcommittee together.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
I would uh, bring up a concern, where are our current numbers, compared this time last year, total swim team members?
Uh, I couldn't tell you where it was last year, I believe, current, the, the current numbers are in Bill's report, I think it's eighty, a little less.
Yeah, I guess I've, may have seen a number that was closer to a hundred and twenty last year.
Yes, I never saw a hundred and twenty on N WAC, a hundred total, a hundred, N WAC and twenty masters.
Is that what it is? So not, you're not including the masters, or I'm not maybe including, I'm including the masters.
I believe we'd have a hundred swimmers total, about a hundred swimmers.
Shouldn't it be a hundred and twenty, because the masters are included in this proposal, so I think we oughta include those numbers in.
Actually, what, Bill writes it's ninety-three total, he's got seventy-two on N WAC and twenty masters.
Okay, so, and it was a hundred and twenty a year before, they include the masters.
But if I remember the numbers back, and I'm vague on it, but I think that that's about sixty or seventy down from what it used to be.
Well, that aside of you, usually when you decrease numbers and then you increase dues, you continue to decrease numbers, so I'm not sure you're gonna come out ahead on this. Maybe the issue right now is increasing numbers to get increased revenues, so, that'd be my.
Right, just, just a little background, obviously, this decision is still there with the board, and Bill and I both understand that. Don't want me to talk right now? Okay.
Unless somebody's got a question, yeah, no, unless somebody's got a question, yeah. You've written, the proposal's here, we got a motion, so thank you.
And then your five oh one, C three, I guess in the past we had a, a booster club back in the nineties, and if you looked into information on how that ran at that time, who was in charge of it, got any kind of details on problems, which is what I've, I've heard, just from amongst the folks I tend to hang out with, that it, it did have some issues with folks just not running it very efficiently maybe, or having a hard time getting people to volunteer, or you know, getting burnout on it. It's a good idea maybe to separate things out, because that would prevent the problem that we had with the N WAC checking account and the running club checking account. I don't know if it's a good, and I like the idea that says, one or more N WAC families need to step up to create it, so it sounds like more of a proposition, and actually we're making a motion to create it.
Sure, oh yeah, is that a question? Can I answer that?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Bill.
Sure. That, point number five, actually, my understanding is that the board can't actually make that directed.
That's correct.
So that, I think if the motion happens, then there would have to be points one through four, that you're considering. To have an independent nonprofit with a mission to support programs here at the pool, this is not really, as we discussed before about setting up outside nonprofits, is not really the commission's decision, right?
No, we can't have any.
So there's, there's a question as to scope, and there have been a couple of people on the, on the team that have proposed, Bill, and they're saying, you know, maybe they're willing to step up and be a part of this. And of course, Bill and I can't give them direction, because that's outside of the scope of what we can tell them. But there's a question as to scope of what this group might do, even to the point where the issue that refers to all the raising, where we have other members of our community that can't afford to come here either, just like some swim team families can't afford to come here if there's not help for them. So this organization may be bigger than just directed toward swim team, and maybe virtually part, part pool stewards, or something along those lines, where they receive donations that may or may not be earmarked for swim team tuition assistance, travel fees for a second coach to go along if all of a sudden there's, you know, a meet that has 50 people going to it, you need a second coach for the budget only pays for one, or for disabled vets that want to come to the pool, or discretionary funds for somebody else who needs assistance for their membership. So it would be as broad ranging as that group, founders of that group want to take it. The problem being, as I think you're alluding to, when you start mixing and matching people that are part of district programs, if you're tied in to what their commissioner wants to do, or maybe they're a member of the commission and they're also part of this organization, or they start telling the swim coach what to do, when that swim coach is supposed to report to me. So those, those issues can become a problem, they're a lot to get out of hand. So I think we're trying to have eyes wide open when we make that proposal. I don't, I don't know if that addressed what you're saying, it's kind of babbling.
Babbling is a really murky problem, and a really important lesson out of this, that we can't tell anybody what to do with a 501(c). You know, they have to do it themselves. In a sense that we have to do that legal distinction, they're not very clear.
So that was... Any other comments, one through four, or we can talk about five a little bit more?
Well, I do have a question. So, I mean, I definitely understand what some people have said about, you know, I mean, because when we look at other programs, you know, I can understand that, you know, we're all in one way or another such tied in with NWAC. And it, and, you know, we, we want the kids and, and the adult who are swimming to be able to swim affordably. I do understand what other people in the community are saying, is that same grace given to, for lack of better words, a disgracing, you know, to their program that they're involved in. And I do understand that, and we had a gentleman tonight talking about, you know, should disabled vets, you know, be able to come in and, you know, swim for no fee. You know, I think it's been brought up before, adults with disabilities in the community, you know, and you start to look at that, and it's like, where, where do you grow those lines, right? And, and I, I wonder about, you know, I don't know how much, and maybe somebody knows, how much revenue is, is earned in a swim meet, in a two-day swim meet? And I mean, does, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, I don't know. But does the pool bring in enough money to where you could earmark that for, you know, this 10%, you know, fee? To where, you know, we bring this money in, and this money goes to help pay swim dues for every family on NWAC, to help offset this 10%? Does anyone know typically how much money is brought in with this?
A Masters meet will generate $5,000 to $7,000, so it's a one-day meet. I don't know about the fees for the kids.
So does that money go directly to us?
It went right into the budget for, for the district. As a separate line, so we could see it.
What if we take this apart ourselves, instead of raising it, that we have a swim meet, you know, and it, it is set up strictly for this, as a goodwill from NWAC to NWPRD, "Thank you taxpayers for supporting us." Because I'll tell you, one thing I did hear a lot in the last, I mean, glad he always gets brought up, one thing, because a lot of the people I hang out with really aren't NWAC people.
You keep it to this, right?
It is.
Okay.
And the thing is, the thing they continue to bring up is, you know, is, is that the fee that we pay, it's not just for, for the last swim time, or the, you know, it's swim instruction, it's anytime the kids want to come to the pool. It's a great deal, it's the best deal in the town, man. And, and I just kind of wonder if we were to set something up to where we as a board say, you know, we're going to set up a swim meet, and this is the date it's going to happen, and all the proceeds from that go into the budget, and then we can keep this 10% thing from happening.
Any other comments?
Just a thought.
I agree that now is probably the best time to raise the fees if our attendance is low. I agree with Kirk.
Okay.
Yeah, I need to hear that, Laurie.
She agrees that now, I'm good.
No, I, I agree with Kirk that we, this is not a good time to raise fees. If our attendance is low, we're trying to get people to come, and not encourage, and encouraging them to come would not be raising the fees. So I think that now is the time.
Right, and I, I'm going to say something, I do that occasionally. I agree with what's been said, and I also agree that, I think we're in a transition period right now, all across the district, not just in NWAC. Across the district, we are in a transition time, and with everything that's going on in our district, timing is everything, and it timings everything with the levy, timing is everything with dues increases or decreases, and I don't think the timing, I personally don't think the timing is right for an increase. So that's my opinion. Sure.
Meet revenue is over 14,000 for this year.
Okay, thank you.
And can I say something about a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
I had this present for later on, but Island County Public Health is looking for a 501(c)(3) to, to channel money in, for scholarships, for all of these things that have been brought up today, special needs, and veterans, and children who can't afford club dues and things like that. They're looking for a 501(c)(3), and I see plenty of people in the audience, and people who come to these meetings and have a lot of energy and maybe some time on their hands. This would be a good investment of time, and it would be a positive way to impact your community and how people are in need. So if you are interested, I'm happy to give you the information and flyers right here. Businesses are a lot more apt to donate money to a 501(c)(3) because it is tax deductible than they are to a business, so.
We actually do have someone here who is very interested in that.
Okay, we'll bring up new business for more, for the discussion. So we got a motion, any further comments? No further comments, all in favor of approving the 10% increase as presented? All against?
Against.
All sustaining? Motion fails. All right, unanimous. District mission statement. That was on here for unfinished business, or, yes, unfinished business. We're gonna, I brought that up, we're going to table that for next month. I think we'll table that for next month, because I think we have enough other stuff to take care of tonight. So I'd like to table that for next month, barring any major disagreements on that.
I think we need to make it a priority, but next month will be fine.
Okay. The, the mission statement.
The mission statement, okay.
Yeah. All right. On to new business. Consideration to rescind table motion from meeting of 8/7/13. Before I go any further, Alan, what do you have on this from Roberts? Because I looked and I heard myself.
Because, and it will become, Steve said that he said it in the last meeting, which means there would be some sort of notice given, at which point it's a majority vote.
Okay.
If it's something we have to deal with, I, because I had, I've just seen it here, and since I've just seen it here, I thought it was a 2/3 vote that was required. But it's, looks like the majority vote, the only problem is that I don't know the substance of whatever's going to be debated, and that would mean it's 2/3.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the murky side, and you can play the Roberts rule, so it's between 48 and 54.
Don't ask me. All right, so the substance is?
There is no substance in the notice or minutes, so Steve may have it, or he's going to tell us what it is.
Steve, do you have that to tell us what it is?
It isn't needed. He's an outlandly employee at the current site, and it's not, we don't need to make a motion to put this off till February, because I think what you do at this point is you turn it over to the man's head, talk to some employees out there.
Better, okay, fine. We need the substance of the...
Contract.
Okay, so what you want to do is, consideration to rescind the table motion, which is that Bill's contract ends on September 30th, when it's fits with...
I would like, I would like to rescind the motion to table, I'd like to bring it to vote.
Okay. So, consideration to rescind the motion, so, and you want to bring it to table to vote?
Vote to, to rescind it.
Okay.
I think the motion that we rescind the table motion from last week.
You have the new Roberts there, so I make sure.
No, no, it's okay, this is a technical motion, it's a surprising one to see here, but it is something, it's sort of those two steps at once.
Okay.
And that's why the 2/3 is required, if you haven't got the substance of it given to your lead, or the meeting ahead.
Okay.
But this, if Steve said that loud, and I didn't hear it, I just saw it in the minutes, then it's a majority vote.
Okay, so a majority vote?
Yeah. And I do want to speak to it.
Okay, so we get...
This is debatable.
This is debatable. The mission is debatable, so we're going to motion to rescind the table motion from the meeting of 8/7/13. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second discussion. Alan?
Okay, I've just got a page and a half, I've had it down because you guys don't matter to me on this. I want to give the background for this, and I don't think it's understood. At the April meeting of this commission, a subcommittee was established to look into the charges raised by members of the public against Bill Walker and to report back to the May meeting. Now, Laurie and I were that subcommittee. In May, the subcommittee reported its findings to the commission, stating, "There was no legal validity to the claims allegations brought against Bill Walker, but the inappropriate actions of the director documented in the allegations were to be addressed by the board during his annual performance evaluation in June." So that commitment was made clearly, that we would take that, take the hold of it, and put it into our discussion. That evaluation finally occurred in August, because we were just too tired of the other meetings to get a big thing like that. The motion I submitted at our last meeting on August 7 explicitly brought those documented as substantial issues to the commission, as promised and nay and reiterated in June. So I'll put it on the floor. If you didn't like them, or if you wanted to dismiss them, you could vote against it. But Sean, as chair, responded to my motion by suggesting that the motion was rash, and so it was agreed to table it until February, since this would, one, give the commission time to assess the implications of such a motion, and, two, give the director time to adapt, since he continually expressed a readiness to change in response to concerns phrased in the evaluation process. So it did two things at once, and yes, for you, it's over his head, for me, it gives us a mediating time where we can talk and come together, knowing that that's sitting there and has to be addressed. It must be made absolutely clear that the commission has before it not only the evaluation forms, but the subcommittee findings, which substantiate the substance of public allegations brought against Director Walker. The charges and issues are very grave and must be given serious evaluation. To vote to rescind the motion at this time, in my opinion, would not only show, would only, would not only not show due diligence, but would not permit the time for adjustment by the director, which the table and motion provided. And so I speak against your motion on all those grounds.
Steve?
You know, I listened to you guys last week, and a couple of things stuck out of my mind. You talked about the, making the promise to be seven. Somebody said it tonight, and I'll say it again, every 20,000 people that live in this district, you know, it's not about just the seven, it's not about just one program, it's about the multitude of programs. You know, it's funny, you know, one of the commissioners, Kirk, I asked you coming into it, and you stood up before everyone, and you said that you could keep an open mind. You said that you didn't have an agenda, yet repeatedly in the audio you can listen to, more than one time, you let it be known that you had one perspective and that you were biased. I do not think that there is any way that things are going to change for you. I think that, that you're biased now. You made a promise to be set.
Why am I biased? I have opinions and I substantiate it.
Okay, stop, 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 stop. Let's, tell you what, there's two sides, we're here to talk about the motion. So I'd like all five members to please, please talk about the motion. All right?
I think the motion is unnecessary, and the reason is, is that he's an outlandly employee, you know, currently. You could release him, they, they could pull this off at the table and decimber, and they could terminate him. It's just, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, I'm going to reiterate what I said, but I'll try and keep it really brief. We have a lot of data, and the question is not how many people live in the district, the question is the law. And what we have said is that Bill did not rate the law, we made that clear. But at the same time, the good business practice was not adhered to, that there were excessive punishments at times, there was impetuousness at times, and I could document the whole time, and you've got it in your files, okay? And we have to address that in the performance evaluation. Okay, now Bill's response usually is, "I can fix that, just tell me exactly what you want." Well, as long as you don't hide behind the five people have to tell you all in one voice, we can tell you really clearly, but as long as you hide behind that, we can't tell you, you know? And so there has to be an opening of communication. In three months, maybe there can be, you know, as long as we all work at it, so that we can figure out where you're sensitive and where we are. I don't think we can right now, and right now, I have really strong feelings about the depth of the substantiation of the charges that are laid here, and due diligence is our responsibility, is to enforce good business practices in a public agency. It's not people, it's not votes.
As the other half of the subcommittee, I think that the finding is subjective, and I think that the findings did not substantiate the claims, and I just, I feel legally the thing was wrong, and I also don't feel I had any problems with the business practices that I found from my investigations. And on the other half of the subcommittee.
Was there, what's the response from, was it Manny? Was Manny that looked into the allegations and the findings?
Nathan Manny told me on the phone yesterday, there were no laws broken. First of all, he was shocked that a motion was made to, to terminate him. And that's what he said. Now, actually, if it was not yesterday, it would not be, we were at a concert yesterday, it would have been...
It's on Tuesday.
It was Tuesday. She answered the phone, from there. It was Tuesday.
I answered that.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you.
That's what Nathan said.
All right.
There's no need for a motion.
Well, so what you're trying to do is just rescind it, does that tie in with the contract evaluation, or every new one?
Okay, one motion, yeah. So, and I, and I got to ask this. There's a motion to rescind the table motion from the 8/7/13 meeting, which means we'd actually have to vote on, that he wouldn't have an end to his contract, right?
If you rescind it, it's unsable, then you would have to vote on whether he's terminated 6/30.
Oh, that's, that's the table.
So for the record, we would go ahead and vote tonight?
No, you, you will have voted to abolish the motion.
And then we'd have to take a next one.
Yes, and so, you know, what this does is it closes down our response to all of those documents, which, I'm sorry, I thought we agreed at the time, that there were real problems that we look at in the performance evaluation, but they weren't really...
Right, well, each person got to submit their own evaluation, and then it's subjective as to how you feel his performance was.
Yes, I know, but then we have the job to take a look at the criticisms that came up.
And hopefully each person...
And they're not even going to be on the table if you rescind this motion. You can defeat the motion after we have, you know, won. This motion defeats the motion in one big step.
I'm saying, I don't know about you guys, but I, my feedback...
I'm saying, I don't know about you guys, but I, my feedback specifically for Bill is in the performance evaluation. So I'm hoping that he will read that and we'll work together. So that's what I'm...
Please clarify, are you...
No.
...to rescind the motion to table or the motion to...
Why are we allowing...
Okay, the consideration, there's a consideration, all answer questions, hold on, is consideration to rescind the tabled motion from the meeting of eight, seven, thirteen, which is the motion to...
That's to terminate the contract. See, we have a motion, right? I put out, was to terminate Bill's contracts at September 30th.
That's correct.
You got a second?
Right.
Okay. But you were concerned, Kirk, I think, saw how quickly it was happening in the minds of Steve and yourself, and said, "Well, maybe we should table it until February, and that'll give us a chance to work it through." And again, to me, it gives Bill a chance to see if we can all get on the same page.
Right.
And so that was what the motion and the tabling was. This motion wipes all of that out, as if there never was a motion to fire Bill.
That's intentional.
Okay.
Okay, so you're doing it all at once if you pass this motion. And that means that the complaints from the crowd aren't being addressed by this commission.
Complaints from some in the crowd.
From some of the crowd, that's right.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Any other comment from the board? All right, all in favor of rescinding the tabled motion from the meeting of eight, seven, thirteen? All right.
Aye.
Two ayes. All against rescinding the tabled motion from the meeting of eight, seven, thirteen?
I'm against it. Against.
Two against, two for. So, as the Chair, I vote in favor of rescinding the motion, the tabled motion, from the meeting of eight, seven, thirteen. Proposal to restructure the director's contract?
I move that we restructure Bill Walker's contract as Director of the North Oakley Park Retriution District, making it a one-year contract with a three-month severance package including full-time pay and medical benefits if terminated prior to the restructured contract expiring except in the case of gross misconduct as defined in RCW 50.04.294 and the WAC 192-150-205. The restructuring of this contract must be completed and signed on or before October 31st, 2013. Will go into effect on November 1st, 2013. The contract will automatically revert back to the current existing contract on November 1st, 2014.
This motion takes a two-thirds majority.
Do I take, do I get a second for the motion as read by Steve? Because there's no way I'm going to remember.
Second.
Second discussion. Alan?
It does not take two-thirds. You talked to me, I guess it comes...
Okay, okay, stop. We'll look it up. We'll take a look at it. Hold on. Let's, we're talking about, stop. We're discussing the motion right now. Discussion on the motion.
I will just, I will say something.
Yes?
Gross misconduct as defined in the RCW and the WAC. Gross misconduct means criminal act in connection with the individuals worked for, which the individual has been convicted in a criminal court or has been committed, or conduct connected with an individual's work demonstrates a flagrant wanton disregard of and for the rights, title, or interest of the employer or fellow employee, and for those who are interested. If you go to wanton, it means malicious behavior showing extreme indifference to a risk, injury, or harm to another that is known or should have been known to you. It includes a failure to act when there is a duty to do so, knowing that injury could result. Flagrant means conspicuously bad or offensive behavior showing contemptuous disregard for the law, morality, or the rights of others. This blatant behavior must be so obviously inconsistent with, or is right or proper, that it can be escaped, noticed, or returned.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Comments? I gotta, nobody else has comments, I do. We just struck down dues increase for, anyway. And I think it was a pretty big consensus across the board that now wasn't the time. I have two things, and not, I think our director's severance currently is 30 days, correct?
Yes, it is.
And that's, that's pretty good, you know? And that's, the current one covers medical and dental for 30 days and everything else, correct?
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it does. And that's pretty darn good. Three months is a long time. Three months is a lot. I mean, that's, that's really good money. And I just, we just sent another 10 percent, and then we're going to up this from one month to three. So I just, the more I think about that, I think that's, I just want to throw that out there. I think it's a long time.
So, can I ask what brought this about? I mean, was it just...
When I listened the other night, I was seeing how biased I thought people were. I really didn't think the guy was getting a fair shake. And that's, that's kind of why I was picking up.
Well, there, okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine, go ahead.
I just want to say that fortunately, there's five of us.
Yes.
And I think that's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
In these kind of cases. Usually if there's three, that's three against two, then that's pretty fair. And that's three people against out of five. So, I guess my thing with it is, I think as a commission, it'd be good to get together in a work session or a work group, and sponsored by Endurus or someone that's impartial, not Endurus, but something free, somebody free that's going to come in and kind of help us work through some stuff. To maybe look at, look at this contract, like you say, talking about renegotiating it, and then bring Bill in as well after we discuss it. And maybe at this point, since the motion to terminate the contract's been rescinded, we do have some time to really dig in a little bit. I would like to tie some performance stuff to, you know, revenue. Or conversely, if there's, you know, a big drop in some revenues or a big increase in expenses, well, maybe that's something we should tie performance to, not performance, but contract dollar values to. Right currently as the contract stands, a 3% raise every year. I haven't had a raise in four or five years, not even cost me living. So...
He hasn't been near the raise yet.
Okay, well, but he's, he's, he's on his year, he's on his second year now, right?
Yeah.
So, right there's 3%, that's pretty good. And pretty good medical package, I think, in retirements in there, so.
Do you understand my concern? I mean, when I listened to you last week...
We're talking about the motion. We're not going to talk about, okay? All right? Caveat on what you said, hold on a second, since I'm talking about the motion and something you brought up. You mentioned a workshop. Some clever person, very clever, and I appreciate that, whoever it was, signed me, I got an email from the University of Notre Dame about a workshop for a government 501(c), our Government Affairs. So it's a certificate program that the University of Notre Dame runs from one of its programs. And they actually do workshops. And I thought whoever did this was brilliant because obviously it came from a source that I opened up. Now, you know, had it been from U-Dub, sorry, Bill, I would have put it right in the trash. Had it been from the Cougars, I'd have done the same thing. All right? Just make that fair across the state. But I looked at it, and I thought, wow, this is actually really good. And one of the things Kurt is talking about is a workshop. And the reason I'm bringing it up within this motion is because I think that including with timing is everything. This is a great, I mean, this is like, you know, and I hate to use comparisons because people are against them. Three months is like a day I wish I worked on Wall Street was in the budgets, because those guys get killer deals. And I'm just like, wow, that just really kind of strikes me. Three months, I think, is pretty good. I don't get three months. I don't know a lot of people that do. But I get the intent, and I get what Kirk's saying. And I think that a motion like this, timing's everything, and maybe a workshop would help us move forward. That's why I'm bringing that up now, because that's how it applies to motion.
So mediation type work, Sean?
And I'll bring that up under my comments. Yeah, as far as discussion. Alan, did you want to say something?
Yes, and the rules of order.
Yes, sir.
The contract is an order. It is an order that was approved by this commission. And surprisingly, there are two parties to it. Bill signed it on the other side. I don't think anybody's consulted Bill, from what I can make out, on changing the contract. We have as an order taken upon ourselves to amend an order that we had beforehand. That requires a two-thirds vote by Robert's Rules of Order. Okay, and that's what I underlined there, because we get out of progress rules.
Okay.
According to MRSC and Lee-Pomell, they both said it was a simple majority.
All right. Let's wait until we have a vote before you have to worry about that. All right? Any other further comment on the motion? No further comment on the motion. All in favor of the motion as read? I'll read it. I move that we, motion to make a one-year contract with three-month severance package including full-time pay and medical benefits if terminated prior to the restructured contract expiring except in the case of gross misconduct as defined in the RCW 50.04.294 and the WAC 192-150-205. The restructuring of this contract must be completed and signed on or before October 31st, 2013, and will go into effect on November 1st, 2013. The contract will automatically revert back to the current and existing contract on November 1st, 2014. All in favor?
There's one absurd thing going on here. We have a contract with Bill, and Bill signed it. Are we going to give him two contracts? What do we do? What happens to what you signed? You have, you know, that's your contract, and nobody's even asked you if you want to change it.
Are you asking me now?
I don't know, I'm not asking.
I think what you're doing is offering me this contract.
I see.
I'm seeing the contract.
Is that what we're doing? Steve, is that what your motion is, to replace the existing contract with this motion? So to replace, the motion is to replace the existing contract with this contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second to replace the existing contract with this contract?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Two in favor. All against?
Nay.
Nay. All right. Other new business?
Sounds like we have a new business to discuss about mediation workshop to negotiate this contract situation.
Actually, the new business was going to be to do a workshop. I think one thing, and I actually talked to Kirk about this, and I actually talked to Steve about this, one thing I think it's hard for us to get together because we can't get together at more than two. To get together as a group and work on group dynamics and parliamentary procedures without having a workshop. We have to look at the legal way to do a correct workshop and make sure we meet the RCWs and the WAC for that. But I think we need to do that sometime before the end of the year. And so I want, I would like feedback from the rest of the board members on availability. And when we do that workshop, I'd even like to go so far as to say, unless we have, you know, some glaring changes that I'm unaware of, to actually ask Dave Walton to join us for that. As far as I know, you're still running unopposed. So, I think that would be good for group dynamics, parliamentary procedures, and going forward. So I would like comments back from all of you by next month on whether or not you feel that's good or bad. Don't send them to me at home, that's a discussion. Save them for next month's meeting, I will add that to the minutes. And I will bring the research I get from the MRSC and for Nathan, or actually, I want to ask Nathan, I'll ask MRSC first, and I'll actually ask the folks down at City Hall, because I know the city council has done a couple of these. And you may already have some of these answers. So that might be the way forward as a board. So I'm going to add that as next month for discussion. Any other new business?
Roof repair. Make a motion that we give authority to Bill to schedule the roof to get repaired. Pass it.
Session. So we have a motion to get the roof repaired. I have a second. Discussion.
Please give us a budget statement to show where you put it for the next meeting.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to get the roof repaired?
Aye.
All against? All abstained. Motion passes unanimously.
One more thing I saw in the notes, that we need to discuss the NWA unconsolidated funds of $16,939. Looks like that we need to decide where that money's going to go. Am I correct? As a board, we need to get that.
You don't have to do it tonight. Since he has a liability right now called, it says in my report what it called, the NWA suspense account. So it's, this needs to be allocated.
Okay. I think they're not...
So you rescind your motion?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other new business?
Just... Just sign it.
All right. I have, next is public comment session number two. Len, would you like to finish?
Yeah, I'm going to reply to that. I've heard twice now that the charges, which you will now not be obligated to further consider, were the charges of the severance. And I want to take exception to that. Those were rescinded by seven people, but they were not, that doesn't mean it was the charges of the severance. It was charges based on conduct by the director. And the subcommittee in its report, which did not come saying they were dissenting views between those who delivered the report, said that many of those things were substantiated. With the exception of one which had to do with some actions against NWA swimmers, none of those 23 charges had anything to do with this one. And some of those things have still not been addressed, for instance, the credit card that was received without any conversation whatsoever from the report. So to represent those as being the charges of a narrow group, and then for one commissioner to accuse another of not listening to the report...
The board, the board, the board. Thank you.
For, I am the Jersey Board, but I'm saying for one commissioner to accuse another, I'm saying to the board, for one to accuse another of not evaluating clearly is not helpful to any discussion. We request the public's integrity there to cover narrow objectivity, and that includes in this thing to the community we're in most concern.
Thank you. I have, nobody else signed up for further public comment? Did anybody else want to sign up for further public comment? Yes, Ms. Julie?
Do you want me to sign?
No, I will put you in. Thank you, ma'am.
Having been lead director for NWA for close to 10 years, I'm in the lead position to be able to tell you approximately how much money, when, why, how comes in for meetings. If you would like me to give you that information in some future meeting, please let me know, and I will let you know about the kinds of funds that you can expect, and the likelihood of getting anyone to cooperate for you.
I like to blotch here the fact that a lot of people characterize NWA as a support for taxpayers. It's a program that's supported by the taxpayers, and we subsidize it for our people. That's how that works. Some people think it's...
The board, so the board?
Yes.
My name is Cecil Pierce. Just going to talk real quick. I read a couple things about the 501(c). I go onto a 501(c). You got to remember, 501(c)'s have to have, I mean, they have to have bylaws written on what they're going to do. So you came to sit there and start a 501(c) and sit there and go, "Okay, now after here, I'm going to start..." a year, I'm gonna start telling them what to do. Can't do that. You have to follow your bylaws. If you don't, you sit there and take a chance of losing your non-tax status. And as far as with this April debt, with other organizations, there's other organizations here that you guys hadn't even talked to about, that may be able to help in some ways. And that's all I got. Now, I'll just tell you something wrong, but thanks.
Thank you, Cecil.
I just wanted to, I'd just say a few things. One, if you contact the dispute resolution center of Skagit in Island County, and they have a lot of great resources, mediation is actually different than doing a meeting to learn about how to function effectively as a board. Mediation is a model that assists people in resolving conflict, but all parties have to come to the table with the intention, so there's a nexus. The purpose of that meeting is to resolve conflict, and there's an investment in that process. And the other thing I just want to put out is, you know, a lot of personal barbs, you know, none of us are victims here, we're all here by choice. Some are elected, some are here because they choose to, not because they don't have anything better to do, because they feel passion and that this is a good use of their time. So, I think we have to respect each other's different viewpoints, and that's all I have to say.
Dispute Resolution Center of Island and Skagit County?
I have a question.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right? Anybody else? Just a minute.
Just two things. One is, it might be an interesting exercise for you all to, if you don't already, watch the videotape. There's lots of nonverbal communication going on during these meetings, and I'm not sure if you're aware of it. It's just, it's just a suggestion, because you might actually learn something about
Thank you.
why you're perceived as a certain way. So, anyway, just throwing that suggestion out there. I would have to, I would have to also agree with the 501(c)(3) can be very difficult to qualify for. I realize that that motion didn't pass, but in looking at it, you might want to actually look at other types of 501(c), just as, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. No, no, I'm sorry, no, no.
Oh, no, no. And then, just the comment was made during the session last week by the board, that intimated, and perhaps I misunderstood it, but that a new board member perhaps will become the chair next year. Perhaps it was just, it was just a casual suggestion, but I would certainly, I would certainly caution against doing that, especially in the case that you're trying to, I would say, learn to follow the rules better altogether. It seems like someone who is more seasoned might be a better representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey?
I'm David Walton. I am running for the board. And, you know, there's a lot to learn in regards to the Public Meetings Act, there's a lot to learn in regards to state laws, the RCWs, the WACs, and Open Public Meetings Act. There is a event being sponsored by WCA, which is the City's Insurance Pool, on October 1, which is an overview of the Open Public Meetings Act, pertaining to heartboards, commissions, and committees, and encourage the commissioners to take a look at that opportunity. Parliament procedures, actions, do's and don'ts, things of those items will be presented. I have emailed that to one of the commissioners, and I'll forward that to the rest of the board.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, great. Discussion, final comments from the commissioners, and I would be remiss here, because I cut the gentleman off. Alan, you need to make some comments about the budget.
I can't remember.
And that's all I wrote down, and I just failed miserably.
That's all right. You can save some time.
Okay.
You'll never get those comments, but I have worries about, I think, why don't we talk about the report? And Lori can remember it as she will, but we did say that it would be part of the evaluation process. I do not feel that we've incorporated it into the evaluation process. I have really bad feelings about whether we've honored the commitment that we made in that committee. And I do feel as though it's dismissed, because everybody's tired of trying to deal with people sort of being critical of us, essentially, especially as volunteers. But I think we're doing our wrong. And as a commissioner, I want to put that on the record, that I think we are not responding, and you can talk about the number of people involved, but Lynn is absolutely right in this case. These are questions which deal with activity and law. They're not questions that deal with numbers of people in the population. They deal with organizational administrative style. I think that your idea of the deferral, whether you think it's three months over someone's head or not, gives people a chance to work together and not have a fear at once. So I could understand your concern, I'm not, but I'm sorry. Right, and that's it. I want to talk to you about law, because I've never said that we should break the law. The law is not an aspect of social control, I'll talk to you later about it, where it's in that whole matrix, essentially, that's important to understand. That's it. Kirk?
Steve?
Yeah, you know, it's, I want to work with people, I really do. And, you know, when I heard what was said in the evaluation, it concerned me, because I think even Bill deserves a fair shake. But when, you know, and I don't mean to attack anyone, but when I hear people say that they're biased, I think that that's so unfair. And I think the reason would be, it's when asked by me, I was told that you would be open-minded. And then, three weeks after you take office, you say that you're biased. If you're telling me now that you will be open-minded with Bill, and look at things objectively, I'll take you at your word. But that's how I feel about this whole thing. You know, when you look at this room right now, it's not just people who believe one way or another. I mean, when you look out here, there are people who have different views and different opinions, not just about, you know, where you're gonna go eat tomorrow, but whether he's a good guy or not, whether he's fit to be a leader or not. And to me, it's like, over the past 10 months, you've had a core group of people who have brought a lot of things against this man. Most people felt the other way, they just thought they could stay that. But you're beginning to see now, it's not quite so simple as that core group of people. There are people here that believe in this guy, that think that he's a good leader, that thinks he's doing good things around the pool. I would just ask the board to consider that going forward, to look at him a little more objectively. You know, not to where, you know, how did it affect my program? I've heard so many times now about the master swim team losing a lane, or about, you know, Enwac. This district is made up of, like I said, over 20,000 people, multiple programs within this district. It's not just my program or your program, it's not just my kid or your kid, it's not just me or you, it's us as a community. And I would just ask you to consider that when you go forward, not to, not to think, well, I had my lane taken away, or, you know, I didn't like the way he disciplined, you know, the kids on Enwac. It's like, look at this thing a little bit bigger. You said you had one perspective. I would ask that you broaden that perspective out a little bit. And that's, that's all I'm going to add. Lori?
I just want to thank the people who showed up today and who are offering some more support, because we do often hear from a core group of people. I appreciate you coming and saying and sharing your thoughts, and also appreciate the subevaluations we all hear, because I am concerned with getting the viewpoints from everyone and making their judgment opinion. I also feel that you often see in the community and around you what you reflect from inside. So how you're feeling inside is what you see. And so it's nice to hear from the community that you're also, you're seeing good things here. And I like to hear that you guys are looking at looking forward and being progressive, and how we might improve the programs here at Enwac, and starting to use some of our energy to possibly do that. And when I hear that, you know, we need to continue to look at the investigation, I feel like it's a very exhaustive evaluation of those claims. I am completely confident that we looked into each and every one, and there was no legality issues with it. We called everyone, the insurance, the lawyers, we looked into, we did interviews. I think we did due diligence there. And so I don't feel like there's any need to investigate any further. And so in my mind, I have a few months left here, and I'd like to move forward with my time. And as long as we're investigating claims, and people are still saying, well, you didn't do it good enough, well, we did it, we did it well. I think that you and I met several times, and met with all the people involved. And so because of that, I don't think we need to spend any more time on that. I do think the evaluation should reflect how we feel his performance was, and that's where you should reflect your subjective opinion about how he has performed possibly, and offer him feedback on how he may improve. But that's what, in my opinion, or view as far, is offering the person who you're reviewing feedback on how they may improve and get better, so that we can grow as a district. Because that's what I'm interested in, is us getting better. Not accusing, not pointing fingers, not sitting here and talking about, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. I'm talking about how can we make it better? And how can we move forward and improve the community and the programs? So, that is why I feel like there's no need to continue to hash out details of, if there's no law broken, and insurance company and the lawyers are comfortable with moving forward, I feel like we should move forward. And so thank you for those who came and showed your support today, and we do appreciate hearing kind words.
Okay. Everybody, thanks for coming. I actually do have one thing to say during the questions or comments.
I've got to respond to Steve here. Steve's outlook is touchy-feely, everybody's happy, things must be good, but I see no substance behind his words. Things I think I brought to the evaluation were objective, things that seemed that were written or said were there. You look at budgets, you look at overspending, you look at legal fees, they're objective. Doesn't look good, I'm sorry. I can't say that that's a great thing. And, you know, I've got to challenge the director on things he's said and things he's done. Sorry, Steve, I just don't agree with him.
That's okay, all right.
I just have a concern about you, the information that you have collected is outside of your duties here as a commissioner, and I would just challenge you to look at it from the inside and the information, and do your research as a commissioner, and not as a...
I don't agree with you. Would you, would you tell me what you mean by that?
Me?
Yes.
I am saying that for him, so I'm saying that he's biased, because the information that he's collected has been from the outside in.
All right, stop. We're gonna stop this here, and I'll let Kurt respond, all right? Because you were just accused of being biased. And then I'm gonna say, after you respond, we're gonna cut that one off, okay? Kurt, would you? All right, thank you.
The question originally was, do I, did I come with an agenda? I think every one of us here have an agenda. You know, you guys' agenda is to keep Bill Walker on, and you like him, that's great. My agenda was to challenge Bill Walker, and to get to the bottom of these accusations, and that's what I'm trying to do. Just bringing it to the public light. Believe me, I didn't want to have an open public evaluation, so I didn't think that was the wise thing to do, but there you go.
Hey, no, we're gonna stop right there. All right? I gave Kurt a chance to respond, that's where I want to stop that line of discussion. Oh, Whitehearted, I do have a final comment, that has nothing to do with anything that's just been said. Last month, during a special, actually, two weeks ago, during the special meeting, that was this month, Marine Corps Month, I made a comment, and somebody said, hey, that could be confusing. And I said, I'm not sure how that is confusing, and I said something about 22 years of public service. And this person kindly pointed out that the public service that they thought of as an elected official, I was like, oh, no, good God, no. One year, four months, trust me, I know to the date. And that's even wrong, see? I don't know. But what I was referring to there was my 22 years in the fire service. So if anybody that was confused by the comment I made last month about 22 years of public service, I was not talking as an elected official, I was talking as in the one that actually makes the bread and butter for me. So for that, as my part of the commissioner comments, I'd like to apologize for any confusion I caused. That was not my intention. So, that being said, no other comments from the commissioners. The next meeting is Thursday, September 19th, at 7:00 PM, right here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion's adjourned, I mean, meeting's adjourned at 9:09.